All right. We'd like to call this meeting to order, the meeting of the Pickwa Board of Education on Thursday, November 14th, 2024. Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is waiving of the reading of minutes. We're going to, Jeremy's going to explain that real quick.
Neola met with us a couple of weeks ago and said one of the things they are recommending to all their board members is to put this in here at the beginning of the year. So the next time that we have our organizational meeting, we'll be putting this in here to waive the minutes. Technically speaking, I'm supposed to read for you word for word the minutes at the beginning of every meeting. So I doubt that you want to hear me talk that long. So this is just a formality to check mark the box that we're going to waive the reading of the minutes for the remainder of this year, starting in January of 2024, for the remainder of the year. And then in January of '25, I'll come back to you with the same thing again to waive the minutes for 2025. It's something we've never done before, but he's just saying to make it official.
We're still going to approve them.
You'll still get minutes and you'll still approve them. You're just waiving the reading of the minutes literally, which means me literally reading the thing to you.
But we've never read them before, have we?
We have not.
I don't know of any board that does, actually.
What's the purpose, what would be the purpose of doing that if we're reviewing them?
So that you hear them verbally, I guess, and if you want to make changes to them. But nobody's doing that, but they're not voting on not doing that, and we're required to do that. So we're voting to not do it, which is okay. We're allowed to opt out of it so that we don't have to read. It's just, it's just a formality thing, a little change, but not anything that we would not normally do, just we'll, from now on in January, we'll both waive the reading of the minutes.
If you want, one of us to, we can spend through this.
I've done this for 20 years and never have read the minutes. So I guess we've been doing it wrong for 20 years, not just here, but everywhere. So it's not just, it's not just us. It's.
It's not just the Board of Education's. It's actually.
Everybody has to do it. Correct.
All right. So we need a motion for that, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the minutes.
Coming.
Kelly?
Second.
Second from Sean. All right. We can just do, we need a rule call for that or we just do, all right? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right.
Gosh, I sure as hell think one of you would want to hear me talk that whole time.
Nobody wants that.
We do, just not about the minute.
All right. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the October 21st meeting. Everyone got a chance to review those. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for the October 21st, 2024 Board meeting.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Minutes have been approved. Now we need an approval of the agenda. I will take a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Agenda has been approved. We have nothing of the hearing of the public for agenda items, and we're going to jump right into Jeremy's treasurer's report.
All right. Good afternoon. The, are there any questions about the October monthly fiscal reports? Everything is sort of on target and it will get adjusted as we approve the five-year forecast this evening, which is the next thing that I am going to talk to you about. So I have been saying for a while now that eventually the number will come in line with where we'll start to have the potential for deficit spending, and that's entirely possible if the state of Ohio doesn't fully fund the formula. So that's the big thing I want to start out with tonight. We have a new Speaker of the House in the representative side, and we'll have a new Senate President, and they're both not the biggest supporters of public school systems. And so we're expecting for at least the next two years that it's going to be rough for public schools. And part of the thing that's going to get caught up in that, since this is the budget year coming up, the governor has to have his budget submitted by February, is what ends up happening with school funding. Do they finish funding the formula or not? And I did some research, and out of the 606 schools in the state of Ohio, we're number 60 on the list for the amount of money that the state of Ohio owes us. And that number is $3,195,238. So $3.2 million that this district, formula-wise, should be getting to be equal to everybody else in the state of Ohio, yet we still don't have that fund. I, I've been doing this now for 11 years. We've been at the cap the entire time. We've never been fully funded on any formula that the state has ever had. So we've been operating with less revenue than what any formula has ever said. And so my frustration is, when ever are we going to be fully funded? Everybody else gets put on the guarantee. We still haven't even got what we were supposed to get, let alone be put on a guarantee. So.
Like who gets put on the guarantee?
Majority of these schools. So that goes back to FY '21. Everyone's guaranteed to get paid what they got paid in FY '21. Well, if we were fully funded in FY '21, that's a great number to use, but we weren't. So we're still getting shorted in this process. So it's becoming more frustrating because they keep saying we're going to fix it, be patient, and now we have this massive shift, even more so than what it was the previous two years, which weren't great, in people that are going to probably not fulfill the rest of the formula. And so here we go yet again, not getting paid what we're supposed to. And this time, it is going to impact us directly as far as our finances go, once we get to FY '27, which I'll show you. So the good news is, in the forecast, we are going to still remain in a positive cash balance, so it's not going to produce a fiscal emergency right away. And again, this is all hypothetical. We are not going to know until June 30th, so we'll be sitting here in May when I come to you going, great, I still don't know what they're doing, because they won't know until the end of June. So we'll have that period of time where we do a May forecast, but it's still going to be what plan, what happens. So just be prepared that we're still not going to know for the next forecast where we're going to end up. You know, the good news is, our numbers keep coming out right on target as things go on. You can see that from the monthly fiscal reports, that the forecasting that we're doing for what we know we're receiving in spending is on target. And, you know, the point that I've been focusing on tonight is the state budget and the fair school funding formula. And then if we ever get fully funded on the formula, then we shift our focus to enrollment matters, because every kid will matter as far as funding is concerned. While we're at the cap and we have this fluctuation in the number of kids, it doesn't matter, because we still aren't getting paid what we're supposed to. So it doesn't like directly impact us on a day-to-day, month-to-month basis, because we're still not getting the money we're supposed to. So that one, that $3.2 million may adjust to $3.1 and go to $3.3, and it could be changing throughout the year, but it doesn't change what we actually receive on a monthly basis. So this is the pie. It shows state resources of 50.1% and local resources of 49.9%. So it's pretty much about as close as you can get to a 50-50 split as far as where the money is coming from. And in FY '25, we're expecting almost $47 million worth of revenue, and we have about $44.6 million worth of expenses. And you can see our expenses are mainly in wages and benefits, and that's 75.2%, and that's definitely within the range where it should be, since we're highly reliant upon teachers, and they're doing their jobs. So we, we don't, a lot of stuff in materials and capital improvement and that other stuff. And most of those contracted services are for special education and software curriculum-related items. This gives you the line, the revenues and expenditures, and you can see that we've stayed with our, our pattern of keeping our revenues and expenditures in line. You'll see, once we get to FY '27, our expenditures are projected to go above what our revenue is, which is the blue line, the red line is the expenditures. And then you can see our ending cash balance start to decrease if we go into that deficit spending. This all changes, right? If $3.2 million shows up over the next two years, then our five-year forecast through FY '29 is perfect. If not, we're going to have to have a plan for what we're going to do in FY '27, because we're talking, we're talking about almost a million dollars worth of deficit spending at that point. This just sort of breaks it down in a graph format so that you can see the expenditures from over the years of how things has gone, the steady increase in wages, and then that means that the benefits will be going up over that time. Our, our services line items stay pretty much the same. There's going to be a bump from last year to this year as far as the salaries are concerned versus the contracted services, and that salaries number is basically because we brought back Title I teachers into our system, and so they're not at the ESC any longer. So we've brought a lot of people back from, from the county. So it was a shift, not so much an increase, but it's going to be, it's going to be an increase in salaries, a lower number in the purchase service line item. And this is just a graph of where the ending cash balances end up at. And again, we have to, we have to be ready to testify, and it's going to take everybody in this room to make their voices heard about why we have to fully fund the formula and keep it in place. If we don't, if we don't, we're going to have to drastically make changes. And I don't, it's not the first thing that we want to have to do, but if they change this up, we're going to be in trouble. So hopefully, they'll finish doing what they're supposed to do, and we'll be okay for FY '29. But this is, my job is to warn you ahead of time that if this doesn't happen, then, then we're going to have some financial troubles.
But we're not going to be the only district that's going to be hurting like that. I mean, like.
Uh, no, there will be at least.
Majority of them would be hurting.
There'll at least be another 60 above, or 459 above us that'll have the same exact problems that we're talking about. If not, then everybody below us too. That's close to where we're at. If you're already on the guarantee, you don't care. You're going to keep getting the same amount of money that you always have. So if you're, you know, if the calculation says you should receive $18 million, but you're guaranteed in FY '21 at $20 million, you're going to keep getting $20 million, even though you should get paid $18.
How do you get guaranteed?
Because, because they lock it in at some point in time. They used FY '21 as the year to lock it in. So there are districts who should be getting less money, who don't get less money, because they're on the guarantee. And then in our case, we're, we're at the cap, so there's districts who should be getting more money than the formula says, or more money that's being funded than the formula says, and we're not getting that money, because that was too big of an increase for us to be fully funded. So anyways, that's, that's the, we're at, we're on the good end, if you look at it from the perspective that we have more money coming our way and we're not on the guarantee, because then that just means like your growth will never happen. So you'll never see another nickel coming if you're on the guarantee, because you're getting more than you should to begin with. So that's a, that's a whole different scenario where if this was happening and we're on the guarantee, we would have to start talking about reducing people or asking for a levy, right? In this scenario, we know that we're not getting paid what we're supposed to, so there's still hope that we'll get the money we need to be able to stay solid. So we'll just have to see how things go. So we'll know in June. Maybe we'll have some idea before then, but probably not. So, and then, you know, they, they keep coming up with more and more mandates. And just one tiny mandate, I, I got off the phone with somebody today that, well, they audit things. And they're like, the, the number of pages that a school treasurer has to be audited on, like their audit manual, 440 pages of regulations and/or higher vice code that we have, we get audited on, is what, is what the auditor team is given. One of those, one of those things that they've just recently done is they want to audit our five-year forecast to see how accurate it is. You know how hard it is to go back and figure that out? The, the number of changes that occur between point A and point B, like, there's no way, because my forecast three years ago wouldn't have said we were bringing Title I teachers back from the ESC. It wouldn't have known that inflation was going to go up as high as it did. So how are you ever going to do that? Like, those are the things that, that are coming down, that we're supposed to like have a magic ball to know what's happening. It's impossible. There's no way to know what two years is going to look like from now, because things happen. COVID popped up. How would you, you know, like, it, it's just the stuff that they're coming up with is crazy. So an unpaid, unfunded mandate is now we have to have all of our fire doors inspected, an entire building, in every building in the district. Every door handle, every door lock, and every fire door has to be inspected. And that's something that we have to pay somebody to come in here and do. And they didn't pay any more money to us to do that, but there's another regulation that you have to follow and check mark the box on. So it keeps coming. I know the city of Pickwa doesn't have the staff to be able to, to check every door in, in the school district, because that's not going to be something that happens very, very quickly. There's thousands of door handles in the district. So anyway, it's just, the things aren't getting easier. They're definitely getting more complicated, and I didn't realize that their manual was 440 pages of things that they have to test on the audit end of it. So I know there's a lot of stuff they asked me, but I didn't realize that that's 440 pages. That just happened on a phone call today, so it was an eye-opening thing for me. Again, enrollment's important. It tends to fluctuate around 100 students every year. The good news after all of this is that we're still financially stable through 2029, even with, even if we went into deficit spending, that we have time to make adjustments as needed. It's not something where we're going to immediately have to do something drastic. We would just need to start preparing for the fact that we need to make changes. And I think that after June, we'll know, like, which direction we need to head from there. So if it passes, then we can keep doing the work that we're doing. If it doesn't, then we'll come back and have conversations about what we need to do. And that's all I have. Anybody have questions?
Is this something that we would write letters to Columbus and you maybe could give us?
I will let you guys know when it's time to do that. They'll, it'll be House bill, you know, in the top 10, 7, 5, you know, it's usually one of those numbers.
Yeah.
And then we'll start dumping our input in at that time. As we get new people in, like our new representative, Jenna Powell's, she retired from, from running for office, and so we have a new state representative. So getting the ear of him and having some conversations with him too about our, our current situation is going to be important, just so he understands, like, we are in a different position than other places that are on the guarantee. We, we still haven't gotten paid what formulas have said for years, and so we've still been patiently waiting.
Well, let us know what we can do to help.
100%. The other thing I have on my agenda tonight is the tax budget for fiscal year '26. And basically, this is just an estimated number that gets turned in to the county commissioners and to the auditor's office, and they have a budget commission that takes a look at that. In other areas, there's been a lot of fierce debate about lowering the amount of taxes because of the property values. So that's something else that we have to worry about as we move forward into the next term of the House and Senate, is they are trying to figure out what to do with property tax, property taxes. And that can have direct impacts on schools as well. Depends if the state's going to pay for any concessions that they would give to seniors, for example. Does that something that the school districts will be eating, or is that something that they'll just be expanding their homestead and, and roll back numbers? So those are things that they haven't figured out yet. They have a commission of people working on that, and they're supposed to have a report done, I believe, by the end of November. And then that gives them a little bit of time and lame duck to do something if they so choose to do so, or it may be something they kick the can down the road to the next legislature to do. So we'll see what happens with that. But we have a reevaluation coming, and that could be running people's property taxes up again. It's happened in about two-thirds of the state now, and so it's caused a lot of ruckus. And we'll see what happens. We're at the 20 mil floor, and what that means is trying not to get totally in the weeds, but you don't get growth out of levies that pass. They only roll them backwards. So we're at the floor at the minimum that, that they're able to collect. So if the values go up, they still have to collect at that 20 mils. And so we do end up seeing a little additional revenue from that. And they're talking about, well, they didn't vote on that. Well, they did vote on that, because the actual millage that we should be collecting is a lot higher than 20 mils. So there's a debate going on about what we do with property taxes and, and how that 20 mil floor affects what people have had to pay. So I can really get into the weeds, but I won't. I'll try to stop.
So when the property taxes go up, we don't, we do or we don't get the increase from the property tax value going up?
So typically, your property taxes are going, if, if their taxes are going up, it's because we're at the 20 mil floor. So yes, the school district does receive some of that money. In districts where that's not the case, you would not, they would not see it, because they would actually just roll the tax collect number closer to the 20 mil floor. Like, everybody across the state has to pay 20 mils.
No matter what.
No matter what. And so we are at that floor. We're at the lowest that we can collect, which is a good thing. I mean, that's, we're not collecting more than we need. So it's not a, it's not a bad thing. It's just now they're saying, well, the taxes go up because the values go up. Well, we're still collecting the bare minimum. So I don't, that's a whole nother thing that I don't know, because they can't make a lot of changes, because it's in the state constitution. And so without having a constitutional amendment, like an issue one kind of thing, like, we will never be able to fix those kind of issues. And I don't know that there's a real good palette for doing that at this point. Because this is a crisis. They've only had this, they've had this crisis one other time, and that's where, where they put in this House Bill 920 that rolls back property taxes to the 20 mil floor. If we wouldn't do that, we wouldn't have this problem. But because there was a, there was that inflation back in the 70s, it created these issues. And so we've still been living with that problem. And then that's why we have schools going out for levies all the time, is because they pass a levy for five mils, and then it gets rolled back. So you're now you're at 25 mils instead of 20. Over five years, it gets rolled back to 20 mils, and so you're back to where you started from, and then you have to run it again to get it back to 25, and you keep that same process going on. If we would just let the levy grow with the growth of the community, school districts wouldn't have to keep coming back and asking for more money. So there's just two sides to this.
I don't think the average citizen understands all.
I know they don't, and it's a lot. But I want you guys to know, because I'm going to be counting on you to help when it comes time to that. It's a lot, and I'm willing to talk to anybody in the community about it, but it's, it's, there's a lot to unpack. It's very complicated, and I think it's complicated on purpose, so that none of us really understand what's going on. And until we make it more simple, more easy to understand, I don't think it's ever going to change. All right. The only other thing I have on here, I know, I'm like, there's going to be more positive stuff coming after me, I think. I hope so. Have to give you all the negative stuff this evening, but it is what it is. There's just a fund-to-fund transfer on here, and this is to clear out the tournament fund for the Ohio High School Athletic Association, so that we can be ready for what starts tomorrow, which is playoff games. It's JoJo News. It's time to clean out the 022 account.
What fun.
You just always have to wait for the bills to come from them. You know, it took forever. You know exactly how that rolls. So yes, that's the only other thing we've got. Any other questions?
All right. Seeing no questions, I will take a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Second.
All right. We got Kelly with a second. All right. We'll need to take a roll for this. Jeremy?
Mrs. Mars. Mrs. McMackin.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right. Treasurer agenda has been approved. Now we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. September, we talked about our state report card and all those, of those results. In October, we had principals come in and talk about the goals, and we identified a couple of areas that are real challenges for us, one being student attendance rates, especially our chronic absences, and the second being kindergarten readiness. The kindergarten readiness scores still aren't in yet. We're predicting they'll be in any day now, and when we get that, we'll probably do that report in December. But for now, I invited Mindy and Krista and Tony to talk about our attendance rates. The first quarter's over. It's a good time for us to reflect on the work that we've done and where we are with it. Are we getting better? Are we still struggling? So Mindy's prepared some information with her team, and principals are here to answer questions as well about the work they're engaging on a daily basis. So Mindy, if you would, come forward and share with us where we are.
All right. So we're going to talk about just attendance in general, and really what chronic absences look like within Pickwa City Schools, and kind of how we compare to the state, where we're at in September. And then I have everything ready to, well, it's not up here, but just a little bit ago, I finished October's attendance rates. So we talked about chronic absence. Chronic absence just means missing 10% or more of the school year for any reason. So it can be unexcused absences, excused absences, medical absences. And that all rolls into what we call chronic absence, if it's more than 10% of the school year. So what does 10% of the school year look like? Well, missing two days a month would be 10% of the school year. So if we think about that, that's 18 days a year that a child misses school. If you want to think about that again, that's going to be equal to about 60 hours of reading and writing at a minimum that they're missing, or an even, I'm sorry, 30 hours as a minimum for math. So if you're missing 10% of the school year, you're missing at least 60 hours of reading and writing, and you're missing at least 30 hours of math. If you miss 10% or more of the school year, every day you're in school, sorry, every year, let's just say you're in school from kindergarten, by the time you graduate, you've missed one year of school, if you're chronically absent every year. Other side of that, too, we can look at, if you're missing four days a month, which is an extreme chronic absence, that's going to be 36 days a year. That's going to equal to 120 hours at a minimum of reading and writing you're missing, if you're missing four days a month every year, and that's going to be equal to a minimum of 60 hours of math. So again, a lot of education you're missing. If you continue to do that every year, by the time you graduate, you've missed two years of school. So that's why chronic absences are so important. And that's kind of why I put that graphic up there, just so we can have a better understanding of what that would look like. So when we think about comparing Ohio and Pickwa City School, and we look at chronic absenteeism, I went back and looked at the report card, starting from the 2018, 2019 school year. See, Ohio's in red, Pickwa's in blue. We're pretty equal. 19, 2019, 2020 happened. That's when COVID happened, so we shut down in March. I almost said May. I wish it was May, but it was in March. And then at that time, during that shutdown, we're almost equal where Ohio was. I really don't count that year, because we looked great, but we didn't finish the last quarter of school. When you look at the 2020, 2021 school year, there's a huge difference between Ohio and Pickwa. A lot of that, I think, contributes to kids being in school that year online, and it's very hard to take attendance during that time. So I think there's a, I feel like what we did in Pickwa was pretty accurate, but what the state reported may not have been, because it was just, it's too hard to know if the child was attending online school and to get that reporting. When we look at the 21, 22 school year, there's data out there that over 14 million students were chronically absent that year. 14.7, I think, is the accurate number. think, is the accurate number. 14.7 million students. That's a lot. That's when it became really known nationally that chronic absence is an issue. When we look at the 22, 23 school year, the gap has started to close a little bit, but you notice the state level has gone down where ours continues to rise just a little bit each one of those years. So at the end of last year, when you look at our report card, we had 31.7% of our students who are chronically absent from school. So if we look at those last two years on our report card, you can kind of see where we're at with the district and where we're at with each school building when you look at chronically absence for each year. That blue line that's going in, in there about at the 12% line, the governor has announced in October that he would like to cut chronic absences by the state by 50% over the next five years. So after the next five years, if that were to continue, the state's chronic absence rate would be at that 12% line. So you can kind of see where that would fit in then with Pickla. If we cut our goal 50% over the next five years, we'd be down to that 15% rate, which is almost where we started back in the 18, 19 school year. A little bit less was actually where we were at that time. So why are we focusing on chronic absenteeism? We can tell that with studies that have been done throughout the country, that those students who are chronically absent in kindergarten and first grade are not going to be ready for third grade reading. They're gonna, they're gonna fall behind in their reading skills. If we look at sixth graders, absenteeism was one of the three signs that those kids would drop out of high school, which is a huge concern for us as well. And if we look at ninth grade, attendance is going to be a better predictor of graduation rates than what we used to thought would be the eighth grade test scores. So attendance is the big indicator of graduation rates. September's important when we look at chronic absenteeism because if we look at our students who are chronically absent at the month of September, they are five times more likely to be chronically absent throughout the school year. September's also kind of hard, too, because we have a lot of transient students and within our district. So some students have not unenrolled yet. They may have moved out to another district. They have not enrolled in that district yet, and they're still in our books. Or times where you have parents saying they've moved, we're waiting for that to happen. They haven't moved, and then they come, they come to school in the middle of the month. So they're already chronically absent because they, they've missed more than two days of school. If you can look, and then at the table to the, to the left, when you look at the district at the top, when we look at September, we're notoriously high, but we're not shrinking at all either. So when we look at September's chronic absenteeism, we're at 32.5%. That's a lot. And that means those kids are gonna be five times as likely to be chronically absent. The good news is, when I finished rolling out October's numbers, we were down to 25%. So we have gone down, but it's still high. So the one thing that we're trying to look at this year is building principles is we're trying to tier our students. So if we can really focus on that top tier one where those are, they're still at school, they're not chronically absent, but they have that risk of becoming chronically absent, we notice that when we look at our satisfactory attendance, they start to drop off, and then they, they're still here, but they're at that 91% attendance rate. And if they get them at that nine or below, then they become chronically absent. Then if you look at our moderate chronically absent kids, they're missing either close to 80% to 90%. So we're kind of looking at those kids that are missing between 85% to 92%. If we can try to encourage them, get them to come to school, we know that's gonna help with our chronic absenteeism and get them to come back. The other thing that I've noticed in September to October, when you look at our extreme chronic absences, those kids that are missing 50% or more, we have less students missing that much school now than we did in September. Again, that's telling me that we're cleaning up the books a little bit. Those kids have enrolled somewhere else when they weren't coming to school here, and it's just taking that time with that, with our transient population. So ways for us to improve attendance, and we're doing this currently with a lot of this within the district. We have communication with our parents, having phone calls, setting up meetings, having Krista go out and meet with parents, talk about kids coming to school. When Krista's meeting with parents, a lot of times it's when they're already excessively absent or habitually absent from school. That's almost too late, and we need to try to get, reach out with the students sooner than that. Building awareness why coming to school matters. That's what we're doing here tonight. It's what we're having teachers and principals talk with our families at home, getting our kids to come to school. Making sure that we have a great school climate. We've been working on that. We're building that sense of students belonging to school through all the activities that we have at the high school, through what we're doing through all of our buildings, making sure that teachers are building those connections with students. Students are engaged, and students have meaningful relationship with staff and with each other. Early identification, we're doing that. You see the data that we're collecting to monitor chronic absent data. Didn't do that in the past. You know, we really started to look at that, that 18, 19 school year. That's why we have all that data now that we've been looking at. And then accurate recording, that's the challenging part, is to making sure that parents communicate when their kids are or are not going to be in school. I'm really looking at, too, with those parents that, you know, if my child doesn't feel well, I remember when I was in high school, I didn't feel well a lot, but I just didn't want to go to school either. And my mom forcing me to, to go to school whether I wanted to or not. So just trying to make sure that we're encouraging our students to come to school. That's pretty much all I had for tonight. So are there any questions for me about chronic absenteeism? It's been an issue since COVID has become more of a glaring issue, and we're trying to work our way of getting that out, that it's not, that we need kids to come back to school. Any questions?
It's more than us, too. Like, I just had a superintendent meeting for the county today, and every school district, that was one of our topics, was every school district struggling with it. Prior to COVID, a lot was happening with the courts, too. There were a lot of opportunities for us to get families engaged with the courts early on. But by the time a kid gets to that point, we've gone through all of our intervention, and then they get to court, it seems like they start over with, maybe, I don't want to say a hand slap, but they also try to say, get to school, and they give a leeway. So, so by the time we've given all the leeway by the law, and they get to the courts, we're hoping for a more, you know, forceful action, they give leeway, and then the year ends. And then we start the next year, and we're right back to starting over with the process. So it's frustration everywhere. We're just in a lot of teeth to any law that says we get to really make things happen. And as she indicated, we have the transient population. Some families will pull their, their, their kids out and start homeschool, and then realize that wasn't for them. So they'll come back two months later with no, little or no action, and then we're back to trying to get the, get caught up again while also impacting their attendance rates, which is frustrating.
And we're also fortunate. We have Krista Hoyng as our own attendance officer. So Krista, you want to kind of come up and talk a little bit about what you do?
Sure. All right. So starting in August, typically, I will send out reminders or letters to all of the kids who have hit excessively or habitually absent for the year prior. So they know going into it that I will be monitoring them for the first 30 days of the school year. I go out and do all of the residency checks. I make sure that, you know, the kids that are, were homeschooled the year prior, if they are doing that or they're coming into the district, I try and locate any kid who is absent at the beginning of the school year, starting from day two, if we haven't seen them. Once they become consecutively habitual is when I can first communicate with them about being habitually absent. So those five consecutive days is when I can jump in and do an attendance plan with them. At the high school, we've done 55, I think, for the school year. And at Washington, I think there's two. Spring Creek, there's four. And then obviously, junior high and PCI, it's right in between there. So, yeah, I do a lot of communicating. A lot of the time, they won't answer my phone calls. They won't answer their doors, but they will text me. So you guys pay for our phone. I love because then I have proof if I file charges on them. I just screenshot their conversations. It is taking about six weeks right now to go through the court process. From the time I file a charge to the first time that they're met is about six weeks. That's a lot of school that they can miss. I can't touch them really until about 70 days, or 70 hours are missed, which is, again, a lot of school that they can miss before I can technically touch or file on them. So.
Krista, when you do a plan with a family, can you explain what that looks like in the process you go through?
Yep. So an absence intervention plan just talks about how many hours they've missed, if they're involved with any counseling or outside services. The ESC actually hired a couple service providers, Megan Landis and Megan Barhorse. I actually used to work with Megan Landis, so we're really close on if services are needed. We try and get all outside services involved. Typically, there's a guidance counselor, a principal or an assistant principal in the meeting, a parent, and a student, depending on age, 12 and under. And the students don't get pulled from class to come into the meetings. So we sit in there, we just discuss, like, why aren't you coming to school? What, is there something going on here at school? Is there something going on at home? We try and just figure out what is, like, why are they not here? So, yeah, that's, and that's in effect for 60 days. So.
So what's a typical punishment from the courts?
So, okay, I will file the charge, and it'll go through the diversion program, which is, honestly, it glorified me. That's what I used to do for 10 years before coming here. It really is the same exact thing. They can't hit the threshold, which is the five days in a row, the seven in a month, or 12 in a month, or 12 in 60 days. If they would hit that five, seven, or 12 again, then it would get turned over to court. So for me to get involved, they have to hit five, seven, or 12. For me to file on them, they have to hit five, seven, or 12. The court can't turn them over until they hit five, seven, or 12. So those hours, they're already missing three times as much school by the time they even go in front of a judge or magistrate.
There's just no teeth. Before, we used to have teeth, but there just is none now.
I want you to talk about the time where you may recognize and start a plan to the time where you might see the magistrate.
That's, well, that's probably what I was just saying. So, so for me to even talk to the, a student or really send out that initial letter about an attendance plan, they have to hit that five, seven, or 12, those hours limits, which, and I, I get a report for it. So then, once we, me and, so me and Daryl sit down today, from today, they have to hit that five, seven, or 12 again for me in order to turn it over and file a charge. So then I go to the court, I have to sign off of it in front of the clerk, then it goes to the public defender. They'll look at it, she'll sign off on it, it'll go to diversion. Diversion will say, we're gonna sit down in a meeting, I'll meet with you next week. They'll have their meeting, and then they have to hit a threshold again, five, seven, or 12, to be turned over. They'll send it to, back to the clerks, they'll put it on the docket, and then they'll eventually get seen, and then, yeah, that is.
What happens if the student turns 18 in school, like, in the middle of their senior year? Can you do it? Is it different when they're 18, they're adult, or?
I can't, it's hard for me to file a charge once they've turned 18 because they will say, why aren't they an adult? Like, why, it's just a lot of, there's a lot more muckiness to them.
And that's a problem when some kids have turned 18 and, well, they just disappear sometimes. They'll move away, or they'll just drop out.
Typically, no. They won't take it. They'll go into the diversion program, they'll age out, they'll say, I don't want to, they can sign out of the diversion program. So really, even if I file the charge, they're going to go to the diversion program, and they can deny to be involved with a diversion charge because they're an adult. So then it's, it just gets sent back to me.
So we never get to the point where the parents get punished for not sending their kids to school?
Well, that's 11 years, if the student is 11 or younger, I will file a failure to standing charge. It's typically taking anywhere between four and six weeks to get the adults through the same thing. It's, what they will do typically is go to the court, they'll say, you need to get your student to school every day, and they'll do like an online parenting, or an online truancy awareness class, is what their punishment is.
So out of all the students that have gone through this process with you, I mean, does it eventually make a difference in the long run for the next year, where the next year's ahead? Do you see a change, or is it all in vain?
It depends. There's definitely some students that it definitely makes a difference. I mean, we can sit down with some students who have a plan to drop out, and, I mean, just earlier this week, we sat down with a girl at the high school, and she wanted to drop out and have babies and, from her boyfriend and whatever, and we're like, that's, that's not a good thing. Like, just like, can we get you in the second shift? Can we talk you into, we graduated early, can we, like, try and get you? So you try to save some of them. You definitely see a difference in elementary schools. I feel like, at this point, in both of them, last year, I feel like I was having more attendance intervention plans or meetings, and I've only been out there a handful of times. But it's the high schoolers that, it's hard because by the time I see them in the high school, it's, they've, I mean, they've already created the bad habits from kindergarten or first grade. So it's hard.
Do you see, have you seen an improvement from the younger people, like, like from one school year to another, where that family has, is out of the, I mean, is coming to school and out of the picture? Or is it the same families every year?
A lot of them aren't the same, but they are getting better. I mean, there are families that really communicate with me very well. There's some that last year, we want to have a parent call in at all. But now it's kind of the flip side. We've had this parent call in 15 times, and we're like, well, they still need to be at school. Like, we appreciate you calling in, but, you know, there's more communication for sure. But.
We're able to look at families, oh, sorry, no, you're fine. We're also able to look at families that have been chronically absent, kind of see that trend, and what we can start doing to work, work with those families on giving kids to school, especially at younger ages. So it's, it's, it's often when you look at a name, I hate to say that, you can see a child's name, and you're, you're doing some searching into who the parents are, and you're like, okay, we really need to work with this family on getting this, on these kids to school. Starting at a young age, though, it has to be a lot of that parental responsibility on making sure that they're doing what they can to get their child to school, too. So that's, that's somewhere struggle.
On the legal requirement side, so if you have a, let's say, a fifth grader you've been working with and got through the entire process, the school year ends at the end of May. When the school year begins the following year, where does that child start in the process for attendance purposes with court?
Oh, with court?
With court.
Already involved in court?
Already involved in court.
So a charge can only be open for a maximum of six months. So if, say, we filed a charge in January, and it turns June, they have to close the charge. So we lose, we have three months that we can, but once we get into September, I mean, you have to kind of, and I can't file after April, per the court. So.
Is there anything coming down the pipeline that makes, that is optimistic for you guys that support, there's something that's gonna happen?
There's not. And that's the frustration, is the governor has kind of set this goal of, within five years, reduce it by 50%. But that, that's what we're all kind of scratching our heads with right now. We're all kind of saying.
He also made the homeschooling bill that says, you can just sign this paper, and we don't even, we don't have to check it, you don't have to show, should do, do anything. There's no evaluations. They literally sign their name, their kid's name, and I'm taking them out of school. We don't require anything. We don't need to know their curriculum or anything. He also signed that. So he's not helping us. Because everyone is like, well, if you're gonna come at me and file, I'm just gonna sign my kid out.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, but many find that that's difficult, too. Or if they go back to work, and they don't have anybody to be with their kid, they'll want to bring them back. And then months have gone by with nothing.
Yeah.
And then they re-enroll them, and we're right back.
And we don't know that they're not getting educated until the following year when we say, hey, are you homeschooling? Are you coming back to us? So.
Many of the principals have student advisory, and they talk to the students about attendance to get ideas. And Spencer, you're on the high school one, right?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about what the high school kids are talking in terms of attendance?
So Mr. Messick came up with this question. When was it? A few weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And we have a really good group of people, and we're asked, and we're asked a question, why is attendance so bad? And the biggest two reasons that came up that I thought were important was, one, that when, the idea when you miss school, like, let's say you wake up at 8:30 PM, school's already started for an hour, and then you think in your head, like, hey, I could just miss another hour, I'll go back after lunch. Going back after lunch turns into, I'm just gonna skip the day. Because, again, people just don't want to go to school. So I've been thinking about that for a while, and that's the case for a lot of people. Because I have a few friends who are in that scenario where they, they skip the morning, then they feel like, hey, I should go back, but I don't want to. So that was, that's the biggest one. The other one is the fact that I don't think, I think all the schools do a great job of creating an atmosphere. I just don't think students care, in all honesty. Because the way you hear students react to stuff is, they're just really negative, and they're just really, they just really do not care about the ideas of what the school's trying to implement. Now, I personally don't know how to change that. I don't have a big enough viewpoint into being the world of an absentee because I personally make it a goal to attend school as much as I can. Now, am I gonna miss some days? Yes. And I'm gonna catch up on what I do. But that's what I think about as well, is when students Yes, and I'm going to catch up on what I do, but that's what I think about as well, is when students miss stuff, and they just pile on missing homework, missing assignments, that drops their grade, which then, I think personally, it would make me feel down, feel like, hey, I just don't need to go to school, just fail at this point, which, of course, I don't think all students want to do that, but at the same time, it's reality of what's happening. And the final thing that a girl named Devia Cooper brought up was that our generation themselves, especially the high schoolers, is just a bad generation mentally, of like, mental illness, just not caring, like I said earlier. And we, then Mr. Messick asked us to think of solutions, and, I mean, we brought up, like, little short-term solutions, but we never thought of anything that could actually fix the problem long-term, because it's just such a hard thing, you have to start at such a young age, and then parents just don't care on top of that sometimes, where it just makes it even harder.
So it's, it's always a topic of our discussion. Krista works, I mean, the hours she puts in is unending. It's not anything we've ever given up on, but sometimes I just feel like we spin our wheels.
Yeah.
It is a frustrating thing, and it definitely does impact our report card. It's actually points on the report card that we don't get because of it, and it's something we're struggling with, getting parents to realize the importance of getting their kids to school. It has a big impact.
I will tell you that our principals and our guidance counselors and our, I mean, they spend incredible amounts of time communicating with families early, like, not, we're not talking about waiting until we hit thresholds. We're talking about, you see this after the first week, and you start to see a trend, or a couple days here and there. Again, we go back to eighteen, yeah, we can't get the court to cooperate, but guess what? That kid's going to be a second grader or a first grader. After kindergarten, they're not going to have the foundation. So first grade comes, they're not going to have the foundation for second, I mean, it just keeps getting worse. Our folks are working every single day, trying to make those contacts with people to get kids to school. And this is beyond, or before we even get into that, again, hitting those thresholds of, that Krista was talking about, in order to apply the law, if you will, which isn't effective. But, so I just want to make that real clear, that, and I know that for a fact from seeing those folks in the buildings doing that work. It's tough, and we all know that if they're not there, it's going to impact every single thing that happens for those kids.
Right. Our whole county uses the ESC for their services for attendance, and they have two people that service all the county schools, but we found it so important that we specifically hired Christopher Pickwa, so we didn't have to share and wait longer to get resources to our parents and to get those communications. So she's working every day with Pickwa families to make the impact where other schools are working through the ESC. So we at least have, have that going for us, so.
Doing a great job. Well, thank you for what you're doing.
We'll keep you posted. We'll keep talking about it throughout the year and our progress, because we are, we are working on really trying to get this reduced. Thanks. Other than that, just want to mention that we had our Veterans Day breakfast, and it was phenomenal. JoJo, thank you for coming. I know other of you would if you didn't have to work, but it was a great event. What, did you have any feedback on, on the event?
I was, I was, enjoyed the number of veterans that came. It was a lot, it was a lot. I used to think they were old people that would come, and I was surprised that there were a number of younger veterans that were there. I mean, kids that were my kids' age, they took off to come or to be there. And I was really impressed with that. I enjoyed tremendously the program that they did and everything. I just can't imagine the work that went into those elementary kids to do all that. And I, I liked it, I mean, I.
I'm glad you came.
It was wonderful.
Every school's represented, and kids from K all the way up through twelfth grade.
We ran out of eggs.
Yeah, we, we serve capacity every year.
Yeah, she said, next year, they're going to cook for four hundred.
Yeah, every year, we, we max capacity on it.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it is, it's great service for the community. That, and just, our next drumbeat live will be coming up soon, so I want to encourage our people at home to tune into those. We release those on our social media, they go on our webpage, so that's a great way for us to communicate things out. And soon, we're going to be having all of our holiday music concerts coming up, and we're going to get that schedule on our website, so I encourage the community to look at that, because we have so many amazing, amazing programs all season long, and our show choirs all throughout the community for a whole month, engaging with the towns. So just encourage people to come and see that and check those things out. That's it.
All right, thank you, Dwayne. Moving on to the superintendent's agenda.
Okay. Recommend board approval of the attached list of donations for Pickwa City Schools. Scott Hinch, ten thousand dollars. He has a Jim Harden scholarship, he's had that for many years. He just wants to keep it going, so he put that donation into the scholarship to keep that strong. Bonnie Murray to the PHS show, two thousand dollars, and then the Pickwa Education Foundation for two grants. So we appreciate all of that support. And then recommend board approval of the attached list of novels from PHS for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickwa City School District. Again, just books that are old, they're outdated, maybe they've been replaced because the books are falling apart. Some of them might not be checked out anymore, so our librarians go through that inventory every year and just discard those books. And that's it.
All right, any questions for Dwayne? All right, seeing none, we will take a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda.
I'll move.
We have a second. All right, a second from Sean. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, superintendent's agenda is approved. Moving on to Tony with the personnel agenda.
Thank you. Any questions based on the update that I sent out? I had a couple people call on some small things we covered, but very short agenda, mostly FMLAs at the front end. So if there, if there are any questions, I'd be open to anything at all.
No, thank you, I, we appreciate getting those updates the couple days before the board meeting, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No questions for Tony? All right, I will take a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
So moved.
All right, JoJo, do we have a second?
Second.
Kelly with the second. All right, Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, personnel agenda is approved. No old business tonight, so we're moving on to new business.
Just the first read for our Niola board policy updates. Again, Niola is who we subscribe to to just keep us in line with any changes in the law. So they continually go through every board policy, lots of districts use them. If they don't use them, they use OSBA. They just make sure districts are updated to, to law and regulations. So they go through and find anything that needs to be monitored and changed, and they correct that for us, they meet with us, they review that with us. If there's anything we have concerns about or questions, we can get clarification from them at that time. So you've had these, if you've read them, then if you have any questions, let me know, but otherwise, we'll come back next month as well for the second read. And you can ask me anytime in the month, too, if you want. I can, I can tell you what the changes are. There's nothing earth-shattering in any of them, again, it's, it's minor stuff because of law.
All right. Any questions for Dwayne? All right, we need to do these three separately, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I will take a motion for the approval of the first, well, we don't need to.
You don't have to do one for this, yep.
So we'll just move on to number two.
All right, number two is recommend board approval of RDA for Phase One of the tennis courts, site development of the PHS campus. This is the, and the next one that you see on there, number three, is the master plan. So there's two different parts. The master plan is getting all the surveying done, it was to generate the layout of the maps and do all of that process. And then the second item that's there is to put the tennis courts in and then put all the drainage in. So we're voting on both of those tonight. So the first, the first item is dealing specifically with the tennis courts and the site developments.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy on that?
So to get the tennis courts in, it's going to cost us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That is, that hundred and twenty-five thousand is actually for the architect and for the surveyor and the civil engineer. So those are their fees.
Okay.
So that's just the tip of the iceberg.
And then we got more to come.
There will be more to come. Well, the next thing on there was actually to do the master plan, so that was another hundred and seventeen-five, I believe. So these services are not inexpensive, they're very, very expensive.
They are.
But they have hundreds of hours wrapped up in how this works. And a lot of it has to do with water. I mean, most of the money that we're spending to deal with what we're doing out here is to get the water from our ground to the retention pond into the creek without flooding the JVS or the Career Center.
Or putting fields on, I mean, it is Spring Creek, it's a spring, so there's, there's, the water table's high there. So getting the water out of that area so it doesn't affect any field development.
So it's a, I mean, we're not just impacting us, we're sort of impacting everybody downstream when we do this. So it's been a big project. Like, while I would have liked the tennis courts to have been done a long time ago, running a fifty-two, I think, inch pipe to take all the water as a main bone, and then all the reliance that are going to have to come in, clear from the east side down by the junior high, all the way to the retention pond, is, it's covering a lot of area, so it's, it's a massive project. So it's expensive on one hand, but we're covering a lot of acres.
So this is, this is getting all that under stuff done in order to do the big master plan?
Correct. This is, this is putting in the underground from the Brown building, the pumps, the, where the fuel pumps are in the Brown building behind, so the road between the junior high and high school, all the way in. The next phase will be from the junior high softball fields, baseball fields, connected into the Brown building. But they're doing all of the work to prepare for that, but the survey work is not included in here for junior high section, because we're not going to get to that this summer. We won't be, we won't be ready for that. So it's coming in phases, but it's a lot.
So once we approve this, what's the next step? Is it, you going out for bid?
So the bids will, the bids will actually be opened, it is out for bid right now. We've had some changes that had to happen, because in our work with the Career Center, we had to figure out how to get the water to not ruin, I mean, they, they've got a lot of projects going on on their property right now, and so this, this water thing has been quite intense.
It's been about two months worth of work. But they've been incredible. Career Center is amazing to work with, and they're being very helpful. It's just, you know, they've got their construction project, and they've got future development ideas, too, so we don't want to interfere with anything that they've got earmarked, too. So they've got grand master plan on top of our grand master plan, and we're both trying to take care of water out there, and where it flows and where it goes, so.
We both use the same civil engineer, so Burkhart is doing both of our projects. So the good news is there's some continuity of how that's happening, so it's not two different companies trying to figure that out, and they're not going to point at each other, I mean, it's the same people.
And actually, we discovered after going out there and walking this and seeing it all, that we're both going to benefit from the project together. So it's going to make an impact on both, which will be good.
All right.
It's a lot, a lot going on, but we're, we're going to fix it. Right now, the retention pond is broke, it doesn't even work properly, so it was going to have to get fixed anyways. So we're doing something that we're going to have to do as part of that process, too, so.
So what's the estimate?
I'll let you know. In about a week. I think it's next Thursday.
We have to get the bids in.
I'll let you know.
But theoretically, it's not going to be until twenty-five in.
No, the, the, this project will be completed, because I've been very clear, it will be completed for the tennis, the tennis to be for spring season.
For next, next tennis season?
We will be putting asphalt down. There will be one, there is one asphalt plant always open in our area, and so whatever asphalt plant that is, is where the asphalt will be coming from, and it'll probably be getting put down in mid-March, if I had to guess. We, we got to get the temperature right, but.
Spencer's going to take bets after the meeting.
Now, I've been clear, that doesn't mean that it always works, because we've been doing construction a long time, but I've been clear what, what the intent is. The problem is, we're down to two tennis courts, so we won't have a home season if, if this doesn't get fixed. So they understand the urgency of the problem. For whatever reason, that, that area where the tennis courts are isn't getting any better, it's somehow gotten worse. I mean, the water is literally coming up through those courts constantly, and it's just destroying them, and after this winter, I doubt there's much left. And again, it's not, they're, they're newer, but they just, something, something has happened, and the water is, is very high in that area, for whatever reason, so. These courts are going to be, we're going to have lots of drainage, so we'll.
I hope so.
We're trying. I mean, Mother Nature's going to be Mother Nature, but we're trying.
All right. So now I just, I need to motion for board approval of the attached proposal for Phase One of the tennis courts, the site development.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All right, all those in favor? Well, since this takes money, we need to do roll. All right, let's do roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin. Mr. Mitchell. Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving on to the recommended board approval of the attached proposal for the PHS PJ's master planning survey efforts. Same thing, pretty much?
Then this is, this is stuff that we've been working on, but until, he didn't know how to bill it, until he sort of got everything into it, so this is sort of approving something that he's already done, because we've been working with him for so long, so. It's just, now it's time to pay the bill.
More finalized.
Yes. We actually have a layout that we can start using in meetings. So I know there's been a lot of questions about, like, people wanting to give their input, like, that's coming, but we needed to actually have a physical drawing of where all the facilities would fit, and then we could talk about the specifics for each facility as that comes about.
So we're going to see that soon?
The layout, I believe most of you have seen it.
Oh, it's, we didn't have to change anything? I mean, everything stayed the way we wanted it? Because when you, I thought when you told us about it before, it could change because we didn't know what was underneath.
Yep, we didn't have to go anywhere, we're good.
We didn't have to go anywhere with it?
Yep. So, yes, so it's ready, and then we're going to start committees. So I know everyone's wondering, like, when's baseball starting? That will probably be one of the first things that we're going to start talking about, and we'll start bringing together community baseball people to have that, those discussions. So, I know, because I keep getting asked constantly, so it's coming.
All right.
So I move, we accept.
Oh, well, there we go. Do we have a second for the motion to accept the proposal for the survey, master plan and survey efforts? All right, Kelly with the second. All right, Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, that is approved. We have nothing of the hearing of the public non-agenda items. At six o'clock tonight, it's the Fall Sports Banquet, so if you're heading over there to celebrate the fall sports. But our next meeting is on December twelfth, at two thousand twenty-four, here at six PM. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have a second?
Second.